Oh, I turned the room instead of the other one. Oh, well, go figure. You gotta retrain me every time I show up. Uh, we're gonna have a meeting here. Let's kick it off. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to the October second planning board meeting. Uh, we'll go through a few housekeeping calls here. Uh, emergency access out the back here and the one you came in. Um, there's a sign in sheet if everybody signed in. I appreciate that. And with a clerk note who was here. Please silence all your cell phones and all your electronic devices. So that they do not bother anybody. Um, gonna follow the rules of procedures adopted by this board on January third, twenty twenty four. A reminder to all staff, please use your microphones, especially the board. Cause the, uh, it doesn't pick up very well if you don't really get into the mic here. Okay, um, I believe that's everything. Let's start with the minutes to the last meeting. Are we good with those? Anyone have any comments, questions, have a motion to approve? So moved by Adrian, seconded by?
Doug.
Doug, any other comments? All the papers signify as saying aye. Aye, okay. League of notices have been published in the newspaper on September twenty fourth. Okay, first order of business is a continued re-subdivision. Um, PB zero seven zero two dash twenty three. It is the Fowler Family Trust and, uh, I know Jim's here, but I just let staff just say what happened and we'll move on from there, okay? Ron?
Yeah, the, uh, planning board have been waiting on the zoning board of the fields.
Mm-hmm.
Decision which was made on Monday, the twenty second, twenty sixth of August, that September, whatever the date was. Twenty third, huh?
Twenty third.
Twenty third. Zoning Board feels denied the application.
Mm-hmm.
So a resolution to, uh, for this board to act on tonight as a period of stability.
Yeah, it's a closed public hearing and deem it, uh, deemed decision to disapprove without prejudice.
Right.
Um, okay, with that, um, Pat?
It's a continued public hearing, so do we need any input from the app yet?
Well, we'll get to that point and you can sit down if you want to. Trust the staff, Paula, welcome. Lance, anything?
I have nothing.
This isn't continued public hearing. Do I have any public want to make any comments about this application? Any public either here or online like to make a comment about this? With that said, I think the board understands what's going on. We have a resolution to close the public hearing and decide to deny without prejudice. So that he, if he thinks change and whatever he wants to do, he can come back. Anybody have any questions? Have a motion to waive the reading and approve this resolution as presented. Moved by Doug, seconded by? Well, this, the resolution does all that, right? Yeah, so. Resolution done.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any other comments? We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Doug Beach.
Aye.
Regina Suso.
Aye.
Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
Aye. Good to go, Jim? We're gonna miss you for a while.
For a while.
I knew that. All right, see you, buddy. Okay, uh, that one's taken care of. Next item up is a new public hearing. This is on PB zero nine dash zero one dash twenty four. It is a preliminary two lot subdivision flat application for Dale and Alan Sadler on Fox Road. Um, and we have, we have the applicant. Come on up and tell us what you're doing.
Correction, Mr. Hamburger, it's on Allen Patch Road.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They live on Fox Road.
Oh, there you go. Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, it's just a five acres subdivision from a seventy-five acre parcel. Uh, or the, this is the portion off the house so they can take the land that's part of the agricultural land and put it into some kind of agricultural conservative conservation or some other program.
Cool, that's it?
That's it.
Simple, simple, Ron. Very straightforward.
Dan?
Yeah, straightforward, two last subdivision, uh, just some very technical and nature comments for the, uh, condition.
Cool, Paul?
I have nothing to add.
You usually always have something to say.
Next meeting.
Uh, Lance? I don't have anything else. Okay, it's a public hearing. We have, uh, preliminary two lot subdivision. We have, we're going to be talking about a seeker, um, resolution, non-significance as well as your approval resolution with conditions. Anybody have public like to speak for or against this application? Anybody here or online like to speak for or against this application? Staff or board, any comments, questions, concerns on this one? Okay, straightforward. So we have a resolution. First one is a resolution for seeker. Um, anyone have any questions? It is a, uh, determination of non-significance. It is a, uh, unlisted action. Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the seeker resolution for this project? Motion by Tim, seconded by? Regina, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Tim Delucia.
Aye.
Doug Beach.
Aye.
Regina Suso.
Aye.
Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
Aye, seeker's been obliged with. Next item up would be the planning board preliminary subdivision plot approval with conditions. Application's read the condition. App, yeah, applicant has read the conditions and are okay with it. Board have any comments, questions? Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve this resolution as presented?
Motion right now.
Motion by Tim, seconded by? Adrian, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Delucia.
Aye.
Doug Beach.
Aye.
Regina Suso.
Aye.
Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
Aye. I'll just use my standard comments. Got conditions, work with staff, get them done, get it taken care of, and we'll get to final and we'll be rolling on, okay? Next item up, let's see, we're done with that one. Next item up would be PB zero nine zero two dash twenty four. Preliminary two lot flat application. This is Brian Blazy. Um, I'm sorry. I'm reading the wrong one. Okay, let's, what do we got? Trying to get this over with.
Uh, good evening, Brian Marks again. Uh, Scott and Brian Blazier here. Um, the, Mr. Blazier's looking to subdivide his parcel that he owns of about twenty-seven acres, no. Uh, seat, would be at twenty-seven acres. He's subdividing a lot for five acres, five acres for, um, a future construction of a, of a house, which is not part of his application. Um, and also slight line, a lot line adjustment to get the required frontage for the new lot that's being created.
Cool. So we're good, um, Ron?
Yeah, uh, I did have a discussion with the surveyor from your office. And I believe we're in understanding that this is going to be a three lot subdivision in order to carve off
Yes.
that, uh, sliver of land for lot number two
Mm-hmm.
to make it a legal lot with a hundred and fifty foot of frontage. Okay, and, uh, the resolution that has been, we discussed it. The wording may be a little confusing, but I believe we're on the same page with that, right, Ron?
Yeah, I see what you've done and he's actually made the updates already. There's that zero, or point zero one, two acres that's being carved off of, uh, one other lot that joins it. It was actually also owned by Brian.
Right.
Um, that's being, I understand what your, your philosophy of that concept.
We can't technically deal with it as a lot land in just one because
Right.
not subdivided lots. They're parcels, so in doing it this way, we can earn compliance. And there's no problem for proceeding for final with a three lot.
Staff comfortable with it and applicant, applicants comfortable with it, we're good.
Yep. Yeah, and the only thing I want to add to that is ultimately at the end, we're still coming up to what they.
Yeah, there's still, there's still three lots, the subject lots that are gonna be.
Right.
That we're asking for three, or there's two now, so.
Yeah, so it's just some verbiage going on here that, uh, but we're still coming up to the same answers and we still have, this allows us to have the correct road frontage, so.
Perfect. Paula?
I'm all set.
Lance?
Oh, I agree with Steph, I'm good.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Do we have anybody in the room that would like to speak for or against this application? We have anyone here or online that'd like to speak for or against this application? Board, we've got, uh, two resolutions, the seeker resolution as well as the resolution to approve with conditions. Anybody have any questions on either one of them?
Cool.
Okay, seeker resolution, let's remove that one. Um, they have a motion to waive the reading and approve the seeker resolution.
So moved.
Moved by, uh, seconded by?
Adrian.
Adrian, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Tim Delucia.
Aye.
Doug Beach.
Aye.
Regina Suso. Aye.
Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we got the resolution with conditions. Brandon, everybody's okay with it?
Yes.
Okay, we have a resolution. Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution? Moved by Adrian, seconded by Doug. Any other comment? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Tim Delucia.
Aye.
Doug Beach.
Aye.
Regina Suso. Aye.
Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
Ed Hemmerich.
Aye. Okay, thanks guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good day now.
Good.
Like I said, get with staff, get things done, get it going, and we'll finish this thing up, okay? Next item up is PB zero five dash, zero five zero two dash twenty four. Final site plan amendment application. This was for Matt East. Um, who do we have here to speak for that one?
Graham Markets is all on.
Oh, hey, bud, how you doing? Hello, Graham.
On mute.
Graham, you got on mute, buddy? Graham?
You know, you got T G sketch and Dan still listening. They're just not used to it.
And, well, while Graham is figuring out how to get unmuted, we're static.
I have a key.
You unmuted now, Graham? Oh, Ron, go ahead and tell us what's going on here.
Yeah, uh, Graham has a proposal to amend the final site plan which was previously approved with conditions by the planning board and the zoning board of the fields.
Correct.
Um, upon review of those conditions, we find that several of them have not been implemented at the site. And that there are other things of concern to the fire marshal and the code officers that need to be addressed, so we are asking that this be sent back to the land surveyor, Venese Associates. And that it be amended to incorporate those conditions of approval. And the code, uh, the fire marshal's concerns about ingress and address some entrances to the, to the building.
Okay.
So, um, we've sent this back to the twentieth of November in order to allow time for the changes to be made. And for that to be submitted and reviewed by staff and then put onto your agenda for the twentieth of November.
Twentieth of November.
That falls within the, uh, sixty-two day time limit because it's not a public hearing. And, uh, hopefully, uh, we'll get.
It's not a public hearing?
I don't believe so.
It's listed as public meeting action.
Public meeting, yeah.
Oh, not public hearing.
I'm here now if you can hear me.
Hey, we can hear you now. Go ahead and tell us what's going on. We know we got some issues that haven't been addressed and that's why staff is recommending that we continue to. While you guys.
Yeah, so, so I, we've went through a couple of the, uh, the other board hearings and the last one, everybody approved it without any question, so, uh, I've worked with a couple of the town officials and I thought we had addressed all the concerns, so I thought this was a final he, uh, resolution tonight, so I'd be interested. I, I thought we had addressed all the, the concerns with the, the last, uh, version.
Well, my recommendation is staff has told the board that it's not complete. You need to sit down physically probably with Ron and Dan and figure out what's going on and what you still need to do. Do it, then come back and we get it done, get it over with, get you rolling on. Sound good?
That would be great. That would be great.
Okay. Dan?
I have nothing to add.
Paula?
Nothing.
Lance? Hey, it's not a public hearing. Staff have any issues?
That's it.
There are a lot of, uh, conditions in here for you, Graham, too, that look at and see what's going on, but the key is to just sit down with staff, figure out what's going on, and we'll make it happen, okay?
Terrific.
Um, do I have, does the board have any concerns about this one? I mean, I know there's a lot of interesting things on that small parcel, um, that hopefully we can get it addressed. So do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve this resolution as presented for a revised, revised site plan drawings so that we can meet the twentieth November meeting day? So moved by Adrian, seconded by? Regina, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Tim Delucia.
Aye.
Doug Beach.
Aye.
Regina Suso. Aye.
Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Graham, work with staff.
I will do that.
Just keep rolling on, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item up is PB zero nine zero four dash twenty four, final site plan application. We have a resolution for approval with conditions. This is the Deborah C. Potter subdivision. Um, what do we have?
Um, okay, so I'm Deborah Potter.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so number three, um, could I ask for a revision on that? Where right now for number three, you're asking for paving of the approved portion of the driveway access point from Conter Road eight?
Yep.
Um, is it possible to change that to, um, to be completed before the prior of the certificate of occupancy? I mean, the.
I'll let Dan talk to that because I'm not, don't think that's what we usually do.
Well, we do, and this one's
Depending on time.
This one's timing and the plants are closing soon, so, um, I would be receptive to, uh, making an amendment with the following conditions of that, though, uh, that it is paved, uh, to the town standards before CFO, uh, issued. And that any damage that has occurred to the roadside before it was paved is repaired to the county's standards.
And the reason I bring that up, too, is because there's, Farm Stan was there. There was constantly, um, town and county vehicles that were always parked in there with their heavy trucks. Um, dumping stuff over there and, you know, I don't know, but I left there, but it got, you know, picked up after we complained about it. Um, so I just didn't understand why number three was there.
So number three there because we, we try to protect all the road sides now, uh, with any new construction. Uh, so that's where the standard comes from, but there is some leeway, and this would be one of them that I would be okay uh, with the understanding that any damage that occurs before they blacktop it would happen.
Well, the way we got this, everybody's okay with this. It says, uh, be paid before CFO. And any damage, um, that's been caused will be repaired prior to that as well.
I guess I'm confused by what damage are we concerned about from?
Uh, we, what we've noticed over time is, I mean, when you bring trucks in and out, uh, cracking or chipping away at the shoulder. Uh, so that's why these regulations have been.
Okay.
So changes are, if you're folks careful and something, you don't have any damage, you'll be good to go.
And it's, it's a minimum, it's a minimum curve, and I'm okay.
Okay, all right, so.
One more question.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, so number four, we've got the parks and recreation fee.
Yeah.
Um, we looked that up and it's like seventeen hundred eighty-eight. Is, is that a fee, like all new developments are paying for that, too?
Any new building that, uh, new house build pays for a parks and recreation fee.
Okay, so do you have like houses and tracts?
Every single house pays. Every single house.
I was just curious.
Yeah, and, and secondly, that's out of our pay grade. We can't, we can't do anything about that one. That's a on-board issue.
Curious, we're that's a proside for that.
Okay. You okay with the, uh, resolution with, uh, with the conditions, with the modified conditions?
Yes.
Okay? All right, anybody else? Well, it's not a public hearing, so.
Good to go.
Good to go, Ron or Dan?
Yeah, I mean, as you can see, there's only four conditions. Uh, this is the final step for this project, so we're, we're happy to see them get to the.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, same idea. I believe that, uh, with the small corrections they can submit and we can sign these, uh, by staff and then they'll be able to submit the building permits, so.
If you get them in, work with staff, I'll get in here and sign my part of it and we'll be good to go. Okay?
How long? The building permit's still taking a while?
Yeah.
Thirty to forty-five days.
So are we able to break ground on anything that's non-structural?
No.
Boundaries?
Not until you get a building.
No underground?
Not until you get a building permit.
Lame of hail damage. I swear to God. How many, how many applications did you have this, in the last couple of months?
Uh, over a thousand.
Over a thousand?
Wow.
For hail damage, oh, yeah. It's been crazy. Okay, the board, I have a resolution with conditions, which we are changing item three to include, um, the blacktop will be paid before CFO and any damage repaired. Do I have any, any other issues? I have a motion to waive the reading and approve that resolution. Opened him, seconded by? Doug, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Tim Delucia.
Aye.
Doug Beach.
Aye.
Regina Suso. Aye.
Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
Aye, all right, good to go. Work with staff, get things going. The faster you get things going, the faster you get in that queue for the building permits. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, have a good one. Thank you for being patient with us. PB zero nine zero five dash twenty four preliminary site plan, Scott DeHollander. Come on up. Tell us what's going on.
Uh, tour of Ontario County playing board meetings. But the county department that runs the most efficient.
True.
Thank you. Um, this is a pretty straightforward application. We've got, uh, um, lot one of our five lot subdivision that we walked through and, um, this will be the second lot that we've got a house to go up. It's a twenty-five hundred square foot ranch. It's really nice setup with a walkout. Uh, we don't have the conventional septic system, water service, uh, off of County Road eight with the driveway as well. It's pretty conventional. And it's a, um, it's arrangement and we've got some conditions that we already addressed and, um, uh, can accept.
Cool. You've read the resolution. Any issues with the condition?
Not at all.
Okay, Ron?
Always nice when we breathe, bro, and it's done.
You good?
I'm good.
And?
Uh, as I mentioned, this is the second time through this process, so
Yeah.
he's already learned some of the hurdles, so I think we're in a good spot. Uh,
Cool.
does have some technical and nature comments.
Okay, Paula?
I'm all set, thanks.
Lance?
I'm all set, bud.
I will give you the standard field. Work with staff, it'll go smooth, it'll be taken care of, and that'll be as efficient as we are. Um, and the board have any, uh, comments or concern?
Appreciate the compliment.
Yeah, absolutely. Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve this resolution with condition? By Tim, seconded by Adrian. Any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Tim Delucia.
Aye.
Doug Beach. Aye.
Regina Suso. Aye.
Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
Aye. Good to go. Thank you. Okay, next item up is other board actions. Whitestone, Ron, Ellis, Story, or Dan, whoever.
Uh, Whitestone just, uh, asked not to, uh, appear tonight. They are asking for a delay in processing their application. Uh, doing a little more market research. I don't know whether it has anything to do with the first Tuesday in November or not. It might. But anyways, um, that is something that has been put on the back burner.
Boy, I'm surprised based on the county housing study and everything. I'm, I'm very surprised with that, but they're the experts, uh, so.
Well, you know, with every election, there is always a, you know.
Yep. So that's just a poll on that one. We're good to go. We don't have to do anything on it? Okay, open discussion is Ron.
Okay, um, I did talk with Mike Montalvo. You remember him?
I do.
Um.
He's still alive? He's still doing things? Great.
He now estimates that we will be seeing preliminary overall site plan drawings for Farmington Market Center come January.
Okay.
What year?
Don't want to interrupt.
He didn't say what year.
He didn't say the year. That's, that's much fairer.
He had a meeting scheduled with, uh, the, uh, industrial building over there on forty-one, which he'll be reporting on tomorrow at the, uh, here, excuse me.
Okay.
The thing, um, uh, Monarch Manor, section two, three.
One they want to combine?
The one they want to combine. There are some concerns there that are being worked out between the current developer and maybe one or more of the proposed development.
Still one or more?
Still one or more. So we'll wait to see what happens on that. Um, next Thursday. Dan and I are meeting with, and Paula, the AG Advisory Committee. I have a, a draft zoning map that has been prepared showing the strategic farmlands that were identified in the town's farmland and, uh, protection plan and the comprehensive plan. And, um, I would like to discuss this further with this board at a future meeting.
Good.
Inform you of what's going on there with that.
Can I make a, at least observation slash recommendation? And that would be that we certainly have heard for a few years now, let's keep the farm in Farmington. That map is a perfect enough to show that. I think the most, the more publicity we can get of that on the website, on Facebook, on Nextdoor, whatever it takes, get the word out that not only do we still have farmland in Farmington, but we're working to preserve it. And, uh, to protect it, yeah, so I just think it's so important for the public to understand that because they don't understand it if they live in the twenty percent over here, which they call Little Henrietta, that the whole rest of the town is pretty much, you know, farmland, so I just think the publicity of this, the picture of it in the, in the supervisor's newsletter, stuff like that will begin to help them understand. They won't remember, but they'll, they'll begin to help to understand that there is a lot of farms still in Farmington and we're trying to protect it. Okay?
With the best of our ability. Now, the other thing that, next Monday night is the park and recreation master plan update committee. Um, they will be talking about their meetings with, um, key players in the park programs. And also discussing in some detail the Syracuse University recommendations for the fifty acres of land over there.
Nice.
Okay? A lot of things are. A lot of things are moving together on that, um, to include some decisions on what we do with the old highway garage and whatnot, so. Stay tuned, um, more details
More to come.
There will be a, uh, public information meeting on November eighteenth. Um, for those interested, it would be good if you could come or tune in to hear about what we're doing. Uh, there's a lot of very positive directions going here that we need to gain support.
What was, there was a date?
Uh, the, I think it's the eighteenth, it's Monday.
Yeah, Monday, the eighteenth, eighteen to November.
Yep.
What time?
Seven?
Six-thirty. Okay.
Mark that down on your calendar, Regina, man's not gonna be home that night.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
So he's not even
Yeah, the other plants. All right, any else, Ron?
No, that's it for now.
Dan, what do you got, other than a million?
So your next, your next meeting, uh, we're going to review the preliminary site plan for Sky Solar. Uh, that has already been put into the shared file for the board. I brought hard copies for a couple of the members tonight. Um, if anybody needs additional supplies or printed regular, let me know. Uh, it is being introduced to the staff by Sky Solar at P R C tomorrow. Uh, they've had, also the staff has said time with the plans already to start looking it over. Uh, so we should have our comments to you guys, um, next week.
Good.
And, uh, but yeah, definitely, there's a lot there, so take, take some time to look that over, and uh, as always, we're here for a resource if you guys have questions.
Make sure the residents get access to it, and they can come in and do it, make sure they know about it enough that they can come in and get, able to get their copies or whatever the heck they want to do, so.
Yeah, so, um, besides for the whole planning side of things, um, the department has been very busy still with hail damage. Uh, numbers are still very, very high, um, on top of all the other projects you guys have going. Uh, but I am excited, uh, to introduce and let you guys know that we did hire Paula as our zoning officer, and she's sitting here tonight to
Yay.
Thank you.
Good job.
To learn, um, sort of about what planning's going on, and uh, ultimately, her responsibility in our office is going, after we get a little bit past this hailstorm. Uh, she's helping out dramatically with that right now, but, uh, is to help support, uh, Ron and myself preparing stuff for both planning and zoning, but obviously a heavier side on the zoning, uh, just so that we can get back to, uh, where we were.
Right.
That's our goal.
But just remember, Paula, as Scott said, we're not a normal board.
I'm impressed.
So you, you'll probably see Paula at a couple of our meetings, uh, because she's only here on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and on Wednesday, she's here a little bit later. But I've asked her, because she gets here at noon on Wednesdays, I asked her to stay. So when you guys have a board meeting, I asked her to sit in to, just so she has an understanding of where your projects are as well.
Cool.
Uh, probably won't have so many comments, but she's also helping me with Zoom and all those things, so. That's all.
Cool, appreciate it. Anything else, Paula? Lance?
I don't have anything additional tonight.
My lord.
I make it easy.
Public, anybody online like to speak, uh?
We actually just got a, something in the chat, uh, asking if these, uh, meetings are recorded, and they are. Uh, and they are posted to our YouTube channel, usually in about a week or so. Uh, so they are available, um, to, for the public to review at any point, if you look under the Town of Farmington on YouTube, you'll find our channel.
Yep. Any other questions from, uh, online?
Don't, don't mix it up with the Big Bang Theory, because it's two different programs.
You can go down a rabbit hole on YouTube pretty quick. Um, anybody else, Ron, you look like you wanted to say something else.
Yeah, if you recall with the, uh, last public hearing, there was a question asked by a property owner adjacent to the Sky Solar project.
Yes.
And, uh, you, you recommended that they reach out to the town, set up a meeting.
Yeah.
And, and we provided them with some dates, and they never respond, replied.
Okay.
So I don't know whether that's been resolved or not. Um.
Okay. Dan, what's that other comment on there?
Uh, they are asking, can they build on the seventy-two acres? I'm not quite sure what project they're talking about.
Best bet, let me just give you the guidance I give everybody. Paul, come in, talk to staff, sit down across the table with them, they'll tell you everything you need to know. They'll tell you what we need, and it goes so much smoother. So just reach out to staff.
That's what they're asking about Sadler's property being subdivided.
Yeah, and right, uh, those are preliminary subdivisions tonight, uh, there is no, nothing in for site plan, which would allow them to build. They are only subdividing lands.
And the subdivisions are not approved building lots at this point.
Well, one of them will be.
One of them will be, but
Got existing dwellings.
Well, that's true, that's true.
But I believe the question is that they want to know if they're building anything, and at this point
Right now, no.
Subdividing offices.
But I would dare say if they're subdividing, there's a reason they're subdividing. Okay, with that, I don't think you see any other comments over there, we've got no public, board have anything, any questions, concern? For me, I will let you know that I'm going to go through some different things over the next little bit, I am not going to Florida. Um, that will scrub based on some medical things with me. Um, so I don't know what my schedule will be, or when I'll be available, but I'll be available as much as I can possibly be, so. With that, do I have, I have a motion by Regina, seconded by Adrian, to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.